Good afternoon. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council, Glendale Housing Authority, being called to order at 3:02 PM. We'll have roll call for council, please.
Council members Asatiran, Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Brodmann.
Here.
And for the Housing Authority, please.
Housing Authority members Ajinian, Asatiran, Brodmann.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Parezian.
Here.
Chair Najarian.
Here.
And may we have your report?
Agenda for the Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, Joint Public Meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority was posted on Wednesday, May 17th, 2023, on the Bulletin Board outside City Hall.
Okay, and what is the item that we're considering today?
The item, item one is Community Services and Parks regarding grant funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the 2022 Continuum of Care Program and City of Glendale's 2023 Homeless Point in Time Count. A, Council Motion Approving Acceptance of Grant Funds in the Amount of $2,741,171 from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for the 2022 Continuum of Care Program and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute all agreement certifications and documents necessary to accept and implement the funds. B, Council Resolution of Appropriation to Appropriate Grant Funds in the Amount of $2,741,171 received from U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for the 2022 Continuum of Care Program. C, Housing Authority Motion Approving Acceptance of Grant Funds in the Amount of $2,741,171 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the 2022 Continuum of Care Program and authorizing the executive director or a designee to execute all agreement certifications and documents necessary to accept and implement the funds.
Yes, good afternoon. Mayor Brodmann, Member City Council, Chair Najarian, Members of Housing Authority. I'm just going to invite Arseni Sayan, our Homeless Programs Manager, to give you this presentation, and that we asked you accept the grant funds from HUD for the 2022 Homeless Continuum of Care Program. This is Sayan.
Thank you, Mr. Galanyan. Good afternoon. Chair Najarian, Mayor Brodmann, Members of Housing Authority and City Council. I'm here today to provide a presentation on the 2023 Homeless Point in Time Count. Feel like I was just up here for last year, and now we're going over the 2023 results. So before I dive into the report itself, we are also here requesting your approval to appropriate the $2.7 million in the Continuum of Care Program funds. This is a program that the city has been a recipient of since 1995, and we do compete for these funds annually, each year. It is a competitive process. And so we came to council in September, and now we're back requesting to appropriate the grant funds. Next slide, please. Do we have the... There we go. Thank you. So we will be going over the homeless count, overview, why we count, the purpose of the count, some key findings, and of course, some recommendations. We actually have a different slide up here, but that's okay. In your exhibits, Exhibit One actually provides a list of all of the renewal projects. We had a total of eight renewal projects that were awarded this year, in addition to the COC planning project, which the city also received, a little over 79,000. We also have the administrative costs, administrative funds that we received from HUD as well, included in that exhibit. Sorry, it's not part of the slide, but it is included as Exhibit One. So I'll jump into the homeless count now. Each year, we conduct a homeless point in time count. We do this, number one, because it is a requirement by HUD. In order for us to continue receiving the COC program funds, all of the continuums are required to do a homeless point in time count. We also do this just to kind of develop community-wide strategies, and the results from the count somewhat help us identify local trends in the community and give us an insight as to how we should be prioritizing our grant dollars, our grant funds, for the homeless response system. So, and HUD actually has all of the continuums do this during the last week of January, and there are some reasons for that. Most of our clients, the unsheltered clients, are on some type of public benefit or fixed income, and they typically tend to run out of money towards the end of the month. So this is a way for our community and for HUD to look at what the continuums are doing across, across the board, to provide sheltering for the unsheltered population during the winter months. So that is why they actually have us do the count during the last week of January. This year, we conducted the count on January 26th. We did provide a volunteer training in advance, so all of our volunteers received training on how to use the survey online. It was a mobile app that our volunteers used, along with city staff, in order to complete the surveys of our unsheltered population. And actually failed to mention, I wanted to thank all of our volunteers, our community members. This takes a lot of effort, and the city would not be able to take on this task, this, the count, without the support of our local volunteers, community members. Mayor Brodmann was also involved in our count this year. He joined us on the evening of the count, and so it's really a collective effort. Our Glendale Police Department plays a big role in that, and our information services team, and our local community members. So I did want to make sure I thank everyone today. So this year, we had a 13% reduction in our homeless count. Last year, we had 225 unduplicated individuals and families that were counted. This year, we had about 195. So there is a 13% decrease. What we did this year, we don't want to just present numbers. When we do the homeless count, we also want to look at those numbers more in detail and kind of compare it to our year-round data. The city does utilize the homeless information management, homeless management information system. So we capture all of our clients that come through for services in the software system, and we're able to see how many people were serving in the continuum, which agencies they're accessing services from. So something unique we did this year for our presentation is, we compared the results of the homeless count to our year-round outreach program numbers, Glendale Police Department's outreach program, that we are currently operating. So we counted for a total of 289 unsheltered clients on our streets as a direct result of this outreach program, of which 99 of those individuals are also active in the LA COC. So they're getting services here in Glendale, but they're also active in the LA COC system. That's about 34% of the clients. Now, these are all individuals and families that are in the system. It doesn't account for others who might not have had an intake completed yet. So we thought that was something that was important to highlight. We identified 195 on the night of the count. We have about 299 unduplicated during this, this past year that we have served on our streets. These are unsheltered clients.
Arseni.
Right.
Apologies to interrupt the flow, but we have the updated PowerPoint now.
Oh, okay.
That we can switch over.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I will match the printouts that council has.
Can I just ask you to clarify one thing? You said 289 or 299? I heard both numbers.
Mayor Brodmann, it's 289.
Eighty-nine.
Did I say 299? My apologies.
I thought at the end, maybe I just heard, but unsheltered.
Unsheltered.
Served by our COC in one way or another, although there's overlap with LA.
Just specifically under outreach components. So our Glendale Police Department's outreach program has access to the HMIS system. So anytime they come across an unsheltered client or an individual on our streets, they're able to complete an intake in our system and capture that individual or the family. So this 289 is just unique to our outreach program, but I will also provide the numbers for our year-round services. So I've, actually, I could do that now. It's not part of the PowerPoint. We did pull this for you yesterday for, for the Housing Authority and City Council, but I'm happy to go over those numbers as well. We just wanted to compare it to our unsheltered, our outreach component, because we're talking about the unsheltered count, but I will definitely provide the numbers for our year-round services in total. Oh, there we go. This one is a little bit more clear to read. So yeah, I already covered this. Just to kind of elaborate further on your question, so during this past year, January of 2022, all the way through December 31st of 2022, we served a total of 1,673 persons in our, in our continuum, of which 831 accessed services with another COC. So 50% of that number, these clients are active in a different COC, particularly the LA COC. So that just kind of goes to show you year-round how much inflow and how many people are coming through our continuum, and how many are currently active, not only here in our COC, but just across the board. And to be a little bit even more detailed than that, 809, 48%, were also served in the LA COC. This includes LA City. So that's about 48%. So majority of them are also active in LA's Continuum of Care.
Is that on this slide here?
It is, and we kind of pulled this last minute, and we wanted to also share this information with you. We thought it was important, in addition to our 289 clients that are active in our outreach program here in the COC. But we could provide that information to you.
If I may, the 1673 are those, the number that have been served.
Correct.
That's not our count. That's the number that have been served, and the 48% would be those that are also being served by LA. Okay.
Right. And that's during the 2022 calendar year, according to our HMIS system. These are the numbers that we pulled from our system.
But roughly speaking, how would I think I'm looking over? Eight hundred? Okay. Roughly 800, let's, let's say, are, we served. There's no evidence that they were served by another COC.
809, about 48%, are also active in another COC. So there is evidence that they're also being served.
Right, so half are in another COC, but half are not.
Correct.
So there are about 800, give or take.
Right. And it could be because they're not in, they're coming in through other agencies. The 809, our access center is our, basically, our hub, our homeless services hub, and most of the clients that come through that are being served by other COCs tend to fall within our access center. That's where it's all centralized. So the 809 is specifically out of our access center here in Glendale, which is by Essentia. Essentia is the lead agency for our access center.
Okay, so would it be reasonable to kind of be comparing that 800-some number to the point-in-time count where we're coming up with 195 as an indication that this is vastly, the point-in-time count is just vastly undercounting.
Undercounting.
I mean, we've always known that, but I never knew, I never saw this comparison, that it was that, that big of a gap.
Severely, right. So we thought it was important just to provide that comparison, year-round versus just the snapshot, a point-in-time count of our population in Glendale. So we kind of further broke down the sheltered and unsheltered population here. In 2022, we had 103 that were unsheltered, clients that were unsheltered. In 2003, we had about 89, so there was a 14% reduction. And for the sheltered count, there was an overall 13% reduction. We had 106. It is important to note that this is only folks who are in our emergency shelters, our transitional housing programs, and on the streets. This does not include individuals or families who are couch surfing at the risk of becoming homelessness, at the risk of becoming homeless. It is only specific to our emergency shelter programs. We have Essentia with our 45-bed emergency shelter. YWC of Glendale and Pasadena with their 16-bed shelter for DV families. Door of Hope, our agency who provides transitional housing for women and children who are fleeing domestic violence. And there is one specific program, Boot Home Bridge. It is a program operated by the Salvation Army, and even though Glendale does not have any access to making direct referrals to this program, they are in our continuum and they collaborate closely with the Department of Mental Health. So we are able to also look at the data and the number of clients that are utilizing their beds in our continuum, and there were a total of 10 clients in that program.
Question.
Yes.
Do we fund that program, even though we can't suggest or give them names of, refer, give them any referrals?
Councilmember Devine, we have actually looked at that. We are trying to see if we can coordinate with the county and the Department of Mental Health to see if we can fund that program directly in our continuum. And Captain Kelly Barrigan and I have, have been in contact, and we're, we're trying to see how we, we can maybe look at that, explore that option of having the ability to make direct referrals into that, to that, to that program. So as we have further developments, Mr. Bolanikian, I'm sure we will keep the Housing Authority and Council apprised of our updates.
Okay, but so far, we don't, we're not funding that program at all.
So far, no.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Just a quick overview of our chronically homeless population. We did see an increase in our chronically homeless population from last year to this year, about 67% based on the point-in-time, and we did see a 59% decrease in our sheltered chronically homeless population. And again, as I was looking at this, I wanted to kind of look at the 22 from last year that we had counted for, what happened to these individuals. And we have a way of tracking that in our system as well. So out of the 22, only eight exited to permanent housing. A small percentage exited to an institutional setting, and the rest, unfortunately, exited back into the streets. So as you could see, you know, only eight out of the 22 were successfully housed in our continuum, which kind of explains why, maybe, one of the reasons why we kind of saw a spike in the chronically homeless population could be because some of our clients are going into the shelters, but unfortunately, they're, they might be exiting back out into the streets. So recidivism, you know, is something that we're, we're looking at. We're trying to look at those numbers. And we did a comparison here this year as well, with our HMIS year-round street outreach data. 44% of the 289 individuals and families that were counted for by our Glendale Police Department, 126 identified as chronically homeless. That's 44% within that year. So again, if you compare the numbers, it's just, we are undercounting potentially the chronically homeless population. So we wanted to provide that comparison as well. The age demographics, out of the 195, 25% were under the age of 18. None were unaccompanied. These are children and families. 5% fell under the transitional age youth, ages 18 to 24. 75 were 25 years and over, and about 16% were 65 years of age and over. We did see a 42%, 42% of the unsheltered population falls within the age range of 55 years and above. This is another trend that we're keeping an eye on. Last year, we did experience an increase in our age population for the unsheltered count, and this year, we're also noticing a trend that our aging population is increasing that number. Okay, there was a 20% decrease in the single adults population and a slight increase in our families who are homeless from last year to this year. Overall, since 2022, there has been an 11, since 2020, there has been an 11% increase in our homeless families, families with children who are either unsheltered or temporarily sheltered here in our continuum. Something really important that we wanted to highlight too, 61% of the 72 persons in adult-child households, which is family households, were females, female-led households, and 39% were male-led households. So kind of interesting, when you look at the family households versus the single adults, it's kind of flipped when you look at the single individuals. 25% of adult-only households were female versus 73% of adult-only male households were male. So we kind of wanted to provide that dynamic too with the individual households versus Also, youth under 18 did make up the largest percentage of the sheltered homeless population, which is very concerning for us, primarily members and families who are fleeing domestic violence. We did see an increase in our DV families, the number of women and children who are staying in our transitional housing programs or in our emergency shelter programs. That number has gone up. And adult, there was a decrease in the adult homelessness by 18% since 2022, and an increase in children experiencing homelessness by 7%. This is just counting the children. This kind of recaps what I just, what I just talked about, and I always, I'm a little bit hesitant in reporting, you know, the mental health component or the substance abuse. Most of the individuals and families that we come across sometimes don't feel comfortable with answering this question on our surveys. So some refuse to answer when they're asked if they have any type of self-reported health conditions, chronic health conditions. But based on the number of surveys we received from the respondents, 30%, 15% reported as having some type of physical disability, 15% reported having severe mental illness, 10% chronic health conditions, and about 7% with development disability, and only 2% with HIV and AIDS, and about 51% did not answer this question on the survey. 60 out of the 195 that, that surveyed, about 31% were reportedly fleeing domestic violence. And as you can see, of the 60, 56 were in our shelters, the DV shelters and our interim housing programs. So there is definitely an increase there. We only identified six homeless veterans on our streets during the night and the morning of the count, and there is a 14% decrease since 2022, but what we're actually noticing based on our observation from year to year during these counts, is that sometimes it's the same individuals that you're coming across. I came across folks who have been in our, in our community for 10-plus years, who are experiencing homelessness and who are veterans. So in response to that, we have been coordinating with the Veterans Administration and the Salvation Army to increase our outreach efforts, specifically in the downtown Glendale area, Central Park area, to really connect with these clients, the ones that we know have been in our continuum for really 10 years, some of them, to get them into HUD-VASH or other type of housing programs and much-needed supportive services.
Yes, Councilmember Devine.
It seems like, didn't we have like one vet in the count, maybe last year or the year before? Just one? Do you recall that?
Councilmember Devine, I think we had three last year, and the year before that, I don't recall. I wasn't part of the count, but I haven't looked at that report. I know that we have consistently been reducing the, the numbers for our veterans during the count, but what I'm also noticing, just from my own observation, having to do the count last year and this year, the ones that we are identifying tend to be the ones that we see, we've been seeing on our streets. Right. So it's, yeah. Terms of the gender demographics, there was a 27% decrease in the male homeless population and a 17% decrease in the female homeless population. We had the same number of self-identified transgender homeless as last year, and we do have the breakdown here. I won't go through each one separately, but overall, there was a 27% decrease and a 17% decrease for male and female population. So we, I wanted to just cover some highlights here in terms of race and ethnicity, and when we looked at our survey results, we noticed that the Black and African-Americans comprised 2% of our overall population here in Glendale. This is based on the 2020 U.S. Census American Community Survey, whereas during the count, the 2023 count, they comprised the 20%, of, of the population that we accounted for, the 195. And as you could see, they're overrepresented in that group. In addition to the race, ethnicity, Latinos and Hispanics also experience homelessness at a disproportionately rate, higher rate, where persons experiencing homelessness were about 44% in 2023 during the PIT count versus 18% of our general population identifies, you know, as, identifies as Hispanic in Glendale. So we kind of compared it to the census, looking at our population versus our count, and as you could see, both groups are overrepresented in the, in the count. First-time homeless in Glendale, about 38% out of the 89 unsheltered respondents reportedly became homeless for the first time in the city. 55% of the 89 respondents reported to becoming homeless in Glendale, so on our streets here in our continuum. 26 out of the 89 refused to answer the question, so we couldn't get results from the 26. Some contributing factors, about 24% reported it was a loss due to loss of employment, 21% was due to rent increases, 18% due to divorce and separation, and 16% was as a result of unexpected illness. So 25% of the unsheltered persons lived in Glendale for 10-plus years, and the 65 and older population stands out from this group. 11 out of the 22 respondents, about 50% belong in this group. So again, the aging population, we're seeing an increase there. That's, that's pretty much it. Most of the clients, 22, and it's same number, but it is two different count, two different results. 22 out of the 89 unsheltered persons lived in Glendale for less than a year, and the age group, the 25 to 34 population stands out from this group, with 6 out of the 22 the 22, about 27% of the adults in their prime working years suggests the need for employment assistance and other wraparound services to help these individuals transition out of homelessness. So within the 25 to 34% age group, one of the key things that stood out when we were surveying our clients was the need for improvements in our employment assistance programs and wraparound services. Again, same as last year, we did identify the most number of unsheltered clients in our downtown Glendale area, Central Park, especially during our morning count. We were very busy in this area, the Adult Recreation Center, the Central Library and surrounding areas where we came across most of our unsheltered clients in Glendale. And lastly, as you all know, we're working on the Glendale Homeless Action Plan. So we had a series of community meetings and workshops. Unfortunately, we didn't get a high turnout of clients who were experiencing homelessness, clients who have lived experience in our community, individuals. So what we decided to do was also plug in a few questions as part of our survey. If they can't come to us, maybe we can go out to them and ask, what are some of the things that they're looking for in our homeless response system? And what are some things we can improve on? And some of the top three responses were permanent housing, hotel vouchers, and shelter beds. Those were the top three responses in terms of need. As you can see, we did have clients who are currently accessing services in our COC, food, clothing, shelter, 17 are accessing some type of housing assistance. They're in the transition, they're in the process of getting connected to housing, such as the Emergency Housing Voucher Program, Rapid Rehousing Program. But unfortunately, they have not gone too far in the process in terms of the count, the night of the count. I will summarize the last few slides. I know we have quite, quite a lot of information on here. Our main recommendation is, you know, city funding, prioritizing local funds, looking at ways we can increase affordable housing in our community to help our unhoused neighbors, continuing to collaborate with the county, County CEO's office, and Measure H funds to really pull in resources and additional funding to help support our homeless response system here. We really do need to look at our rapid rehousing programs. As of today, I could say that we have zero vacancies in our rapid rehousing programs. So we really need to start prioritizing funding, funding state and Measure H funds countywide to increase the number of rapid rehousing beds here in our community and increase interim housing programs. Improve collaboration with our mainstream and healthcare providers. This is another area that we really need to look at and continue making improvements on. In order for the city and for our providers to apply for new funding, we really need to make sure that we have support from our healthcare agencies, Department of Health Services, Department of Mental Health, pull in resources so that we are at capacity and that we can provide the wraparound services. So in order for us to do that through our COC program specifically, we're really looking at working on this area to pull in those partnerships countywide. And finalize our state-funded Glendale Action Plan. That's our other recommendation. We are in the final stages of working on our action plan, and we will have hopefully the final version before the end of this fiscal year. And continue reducing our, working with our veterans, the very few that we have identified in our community. We need to work on housing our homeless vets, that's our unhoused vets, and also develop a zero tolerance policy for children living on our streets. As I mentioned previously, we do have children in our transitional housing programs and our emergency shelters. We really need to start prioritizing and, you know, have the sense of urgency to, to place our homeless families and, and their children in our programs. And we're continuing to work with our outreach teams. We want to expand on our outreach programs with our Glendale Police Department and our local service providers to really provide wraparound services, provide mobile case management to our clients, maybe expand to bring in, you know, mobile medicine and other types of services in our community. So this sums up my presentation. Thank you for listening to all of the data and all the numbers, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Councilmember Divine?
Thank you. I just have one question. You know, you've done the data for, you know, demographics and et cetera, et cetera. The number that bothers me is on the chronically homeless, the sheltered, where 22, 22 were sheltered and only eight remained or, or made it, let's say, made it. Do you have research tells you why? What, it's 14 of them ended up maybe back on the streets?
Councilmember Divine, dealing with the chronically homeless population is, there has to be really strong response, a system that has intensive wraparound services. When we're working with the unsheltered population, there are a lot of barriers and challenges. For example, document readiness. Most of our clients that are chronically homeless or have been living on the streets, they don't have the right documents to get into our housing programs. They don't know where to go to get the right services. They don't know who to contact to get the help that they need. And I know it seems like a simple task, but how difficult, for example, can it be to obtain documents for your clients or to complete the paperwork? But I have to say, in looking at our Emergency Housing Voucher Program, that's one of the top reasons why some of our clients are not able to get housed, because we need to work on getting them document-ready, we need to work on getting them the supportive services that they need. And at the same time, we have to kind of have this housing-first model in place. We can't push services on our clients. We have to really bring them in and build that rapport, get them stabilized first before we can provide the services. So there are multiple challenges and barriers with our chronically homeless population, multiple chronic health conditions that they're struggling with while living on the streets. Some of our clients are, are dying in our community without us even being aware of it, in their cars and their vehicles. So it's, it's, it's a very challenging area, but we are aware of that, and we're working very closely with our providers to pull in a lot of support from our healthcare agencies and our DMH, Department of Mental Health, to see how we can connect with them better. If they can't come to us, we have to go to them. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure if some of you have heard Mobile DMV. You know, DMV has these mobile outreach vans that are being used out in LA where they can just drive up to your community and they can issue an ID on the spot for your clients without them having to come in to your access center for services. So these are things that we're looking at to figure out, how can we make the process easier for our clients? I think collaboration is key, and we talk about building rapport with our clients, but we need to also start building rapport with a lot of our agencies locally and countywide to pull in a lot of support. So I hope I answered your question.
Well, I was actually asking about the sheltered, the chronically, the sheltered. And you said that eight, only eight of the 22 were successful in that program. What happened to the other 14? Was it because of mental problems? I mean, is anybody tracking that? What, what causes them to, to leave the shelter?
Councilmember Divine, we are tracking that. Most of them leave voluntarily, so if, if they want to leave your COC, we actually track the progress. Some of them go to Burbank, or some of them kind of hop around between the different COCs. And they can, of course, hold them back. You know, our shelter staff, if clients want to exit the shelter, if they want to leave, unfortunately, we can't, you know, hold them back from leaving. Some people exit the program. Three were actually exited to an institutional setting. So sometimes there are times where they have to go to a substance abuse facility or a 90-day inpatient care, that type of thing. But we do keep a track, but again, it comes down to housing placement. We still look at that number, and eight out of the 22, you know, is a pretty low percentage.
I guess I'm, I'm just looking for, are you, is someone asking them when they say, I'm leaving, why are you leaving? And then keep track of that data? Is it, you know, what, what are the predominant reasons that the shelter program isn't more successful? Does that make sense?
It does, and it could be for multiple reasons. Sometimes clients get tired of waiting. Sometimes clients get bumped around between program to program, service to service. Sometimes clients aren't happy with a congregate sheltering environment. You know, people that come into our shelter experience a lot of trauma. So, you know, we have to really be, staff has to be trained to respond to the needs of the clients so we don't trigger further trauma. And sometimes being in a setting where there's other people there, it could trigger further trauma for our clients, so they don't like to be in that environment. It could be for multiple reasons, to be quite honest, but I think, given the number of vacancies that we have in our programs and the number of clients that come through, I think sometimes clients do get tired of waiting around and hoping that they get pulled from the list.
I just think that knowing why they're leaving is an important bit of information that we need to have so that we can correct that, you know, is it because they're not getting the support? Is it because, you know, it's crowded? Is it because they're not blending with the situation? I mean, it just seems like if we had that, that information, we could correct that and maybe be more successful.
If I may, Councilmember Divine, I know that for a lot of, I think, mental health services happens to be the number one thing that it is hard for these individuals to access. And when we are able to put them in contact with someone who can help them, it's the continuation or the consistency of, of the therapy needed. I know that I've worked with community services and parks on individuals who had hoarding issues, some of them are hoarders. And when you put them in an apartment, you know, the, the issues get compounded and eventually the landlords have, I know that happened to at least one person during COVID where they weren't maintaining the room to the point where it's affecting others in the hotel or the motel where they were, and they had to be released or once the time expired, there wasn't anywhere else to put them. So it's a myriad of issues. One of the things that I wanted to ask is, are we partnering with any of the mental health services? Who, who is our mental health support agency that's helping kind of layer on top of the work that you're doing, Mrs. Iyan, in your, in your department?
Councilmember Kasakian, we currently don't have a designated mental health agency specifically in Glendale designated to take on referrals, which is one of the problems that, you know, one of the areas that we want to look at further. We do have Didi Hirsch in our community, a mental health agency. And I know a number of years back, maybe five years ago, we did have a partnership with Didi Hirsch, so we were able to refer our clients that were coming through the access center, make direct referrals. But with Measure H coming in the picture, a lot of our even local agencies started contracting directly with the county through DMH and DHS. And so the referral process became more complicated. In fact, up until maybe four months ago, Didi Hirsch was not taking any new clients. They weren't accepting any clients from our access center. They had a full caseload, so we were trying to look around to see if we can find any other healthcare agency locally, mental healthcare agency. I know that Adventist, you know, we work with our local hospitals. We have been communicating with them, and they've been wonderful in taking the clients on, on providing that case management. But I definitely think we need to pull in more support that we currently do not have designated agency here.
Question for, I was thinking the same way, way that Mr. Kasakian was thinking. So maybe the main reason was the, in sheltered, sheltered persons having, do we, do we know, do we have more in people with mental health problems in sheltered or in sheltered, unsheltered?
Housing Authority member Parasian, I think it, sheltered or unsheltered, I think the problem kind of exists with the both groups. It's just more difficult working with the unsheltered chronically homeless population because, you know, they've been, the longer you remain homeless, the longer you're exposed to different types of chronic health conditions. If you're already struggling with severe mental illness or substance abuse, it tends to exasperate your condition or your situation. So I would, to answer your question, I think the issue persists with both groups. It's just how do we come up with a better way of providing that intensive case management? You know, we had one client that we housed, she was homeless for over 10 years in our community. And my team actually spent about three or four times a day, then met with this client for three months before she even agreed to come through and get connected to our housing services. Our clients really need that intensive wraparound support, almost like that one-on-one care. You know, showing up in the community and being able to just talk to somebody and leave and not come back until a week later to see if you could provide the services, you lose that rapport, you lose that connection. I think it's that progressive engagement that we're trying to develop. And we currently, as it stands with our service providers, we don't have the capacity to do that on a day-to-day basis. We have to lean on DMH and other larger mental health agencies to pull in support.
Councilmember Najarian?
So I have three issues that I want to discuss. Number one, I think I was under the naive impression that the homeless are indigent, that they have no income, that they are penniless. That's not the case, is it? Some of them get regular funding, whether it's social security or welfare or veterans' benefits or something else, right?
Chair Najarian, yes, they do. Some of our clients are still pending access to the mainstream benefits, so we're trying to connect with them. But yes, some of them do have income, whether it's general relief, social security, they do have some form of income, but not enough to sustain them and, and get them housed, especially here in Glendale on a fixed income, you know, public benefits. A lot of our clients are not able to afford the rent on their own. But yes, to, to answer your question, yes.
Do we inform them? I don't want to be too controversial here, that with the income that they may represent that they have, that they may be able to afford housing in a less expensive community.
Chair Najarian, we, we, I'm sure the case managers or the outreach teams can potentially inform them, but a lot of our unsheltered neighbors like Glendale are, they like to be in our city. Some of them have grown up in the city, some of them have lived in the city for 10-plus years. And so I think for them, familiarity, familiarity of having family here, ties to Glendale, sometimes is challenging to transition our clients. But for those who do come through our access center and are entered into our programs, some of them actually do end up renting outside of Glendale, and we do allow for that to happen. So, yeah.
My second question is, on your survey that you did them, that you presented to them, did you ask them if they had family that knew that they were homeless?
Yes, we do ask them if they have family, if they're here in Glendale, if they have any ties to their families. And some of them do, actually, they do couch serve. So sometimes they're homeless, other times they're living with their sisters or their brothers or family members. But for the most part, the chronically homeless population that we've interviewed or surveyed, they do not have immediate family times.
There was that heartwarming story of that young woman who didn't realize her, her mother in the Northwest didn't realize she was down here, and she got a hairdo and all that, and she was, I think the police department was involved in that, probably your staff too. And they reunited them.
Yes.
I guess my point is that it's, I think, perhaps a family would take it on themselves if they were to know that a family member was on the streets to bring them back in and, you know, provide them the care and affection and, you know, advice that, that we can't do as a outreach team, you know, when we just see them once a week or whatever. So I think that's an important fact. The third point is, I think we should get ready, gear up, and prepare to, to work with the CARE Act, Governor Newsom's. the CARE Act, Governor Newsom's new law that says that first responders or family members or medical providers, if they believe the person is schizophrenic or harmful to themselves or unable to care for themselves, receive basically, well, do you, what, what do they receive? Do you know that? Are you familiar with that?
They're still developing on Care Court, and we are keeping a close eye on Care Court and the implementation of the program, once it's approved and it's officially rolled up.
It'll be county administered, as I understand. I think we should take use of, someone that is resistant to housing and refuses all aid and is living on the streets is a candidate for that. I can't think of any humanitarian benefit to letting them live that way, saying, oh, they're born free, they're a free soul. If they're eating out of garbage cans and soiling themselves and sleeping in doorways, that's not healthy and that's the type of person, I don't know how many of those in the list match that. Maybe that's an extreme, maybe it's not the worst extreme, but extreme example of the homeless resistant. Those are the type of people we should be ready to qualify and submit into that Care Court program.
Chair Najarian, yes.
The ones that want help, the ones that are cooperating, the ones that are trying and accepting outreach, that's a different story. But there are those that have whatever mental issues or who think that the lifestyle they're choosing is what, how they want to live. And we as a city have an obligation to say, no, that's not how you can live. And the governor obviously has agreed with us, the governor and the legislature, that there are those examples that we need to take a more firm approach with. And I hope that as this comes forward, that we, if this authority needs to develop policies to assist you, or you can come to us and explain it more clearly, I think that's something we need to look at.
Chair Najarian, yes, and we have been looking at it, actually as a result of our last meeting with the Board of Supervisor. We did meet with the Department of Mental Health. They actually came down and met with our outreach teams here in Glendale. They have a home program. And one of the things that they do is they help communities, specifically they can help Glendale. For those who are gravely disabled, as you mentioned, that type of group where they can't care for themselves, they're not able to care for themselves, but they need the help. We are working with DMH through that home program to start documenting, you know, or to start keeping track of those clients in our community so that eventually when Care Court is finalized and it is available in our continuum, that we would be able to work with DMH to refer the clients through Care Court. So we have kind of already started looking at that and coordinating with DMH, but as there's more developments, we'll be happy to provide you with an update on that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Kasakian. Thank you. So how do we compare to Burbank in terms of our numbers? I know that we used to have at one point cold weather shelter when it was, it became really cold. We were the place, and I don't know if Councilmembers Devine or Najarian remember, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it became the place where we housed everyone in the region during very cold season. Then that went away, and so everyone had to kind of fend for themselves. But, and I'm assuming that folks who are, we see from your report that a large part of our homeless people are Glendale homeless. There's more coming in from Los Angeles and we can try and surmise the reasons why and go into it. But how, how are we doing in terms of, how are we in comparison to, let's say, Burbank? Do we know?
Councilmember Kasakian, we don't know for this year. For the 2020, they haven't released the homeless count results yet. But I know Burbank, it's a little bit unique in Burbank since they're part of the LA COC. They do do the observational count and the numbers are combined with LSA's homeless count report. However, we are going to be meeting with LSA in the upcoming month to discuss the results individually within each COC. So I will eventually have an update from all of the cities on what their homeless count numbers look like, and I'd be happy to share those results.
Sure. And I would be curious to know for Pasadena as well, only because we're looking at certain figures and trends and seeing that certain populations are represented more than, say, others. And I'd just be curious to know what, if there's something that's unique to Glendale, if it's impacting the region. And I would, I hope that City Manager Galanian and your staff could get an answer from Burbank. And I, I would assume that their city managers and their staff should know how many homeless individuals, unsheltered individuals, there are families in their cities. So that's one. I would like, if you have needs, for instance, we're talking about those wraparound services, the social services that are needed, especially in mental health, please let us know. So when we're going through these budget study sessions and we need to allocate a little bit more, if we're meeting with our state legislators, I know that mental health is a very, very important priority for Senator Portantino. He's always talking about it and working on initiatives. Let's try and get some of the funding, try and help these individuals because putting a roof over their heads is just one part of it. The other part of it is trying to help them heal themselves from the trauma of having lived on the streets for so long or whatever other conditions they may have that led to that outcome. So I would, you know, urge you to please tell us. And if there's something that we can do, allow us to use our positions and the bully pulpit to ask our electeds and our representatives at other levels for more. For instance, when we had the meeting with the supervisor, I think it was important to tell Supervisor Bargran, for all the supervisors to know how much we pay into the Measure H fund, how much we receive back. And again, for those who are watching who may not be aware, annually, 10 million of our sales tax dollars go to the county against which we only receive $200,000 back to provide the services, which your staff and you do, Yeoman's Job, you do amazing work and did so throughout the, throughout the pandemic. And had we, if we were to even keep the full amount of the funds that we pay through Measure H sales tax to the county for just two years, we could probably build shelters or build units for all these individuals. Now, I know that when individuals are taken in through, I know Essencia is one of our, one of our COC partners, and they process some individuals, they'll take them from pretty much, they can take them from anywhere, right? There's nothing that specifically says that you have to give priority to Glendale individuals?
No.
Yet, here's my question, and I'm not trying this, I'm not saying this to sound callous or heartless. I know through my visits to some of the small home communities that have now popped up, various districts in LA are building these tiny home communities to try and address the issue of individuals who have no homes and are living on streets. They have to show, in order to be prioritized to get a unit in one of those small communities, you have to prove that you are homeless within that council district. Do we know, is there a way to find out what allows LA to impose that type of a restriction on their homeless services versus us and our continuum of care services?
Councilmember Kasakian, I do want to clarify that. So anybody who comes in for services isn't denied services, especially when you have federal funds in play, you do have to offer services to everyone. But what we do internally, Glendale, we do have preference for clients who are homeless here in Glendale. And one of the ways we identify their status is through our outreach teams, for example. We look to see where the client was homeless. We also have a way of looking in the system through GIS mapping to see where the clients were first assessed. That's how we're able to pull the data that we have for you today. My team, our HMIS associate goes in and he actually looks through GIS mapping to see where these clients became homeless for the first time. And so like in terms of our EHV program, the Emergency Housing Voucher Program, we are prioritizing those who are unsheltered in our community through Essencia's outreach, through PD outreach. So we are taking a close look to make sure that, not to say prioritize, but preference is given to those who are in our community.
And the Salvation Army also has housing for homeless families and individuals?
Yes, so Salvation Army is one of the agencies that's part of the COC program. Their Chester Street Permanent Supportive Housing Program, it's almost like a project-based housing for chronically homeless clients in our community. And do, we do work with them directly for referrals through Chester Street. However, there isn't much movement in those programs because once clients get placed, they could remain in housing for years. There's no limit to the PSH program.
I just, I'm asking because I, I wish there was a better way to address how we handle the families. I've been to our COC partners' facilities and I've taken a tour of it. And I know that there's attempts, although not very good ones, to have families separated from the general, larger population of individuals who use those services. And, and it can be a very real and daunting experience to be in there as a child in that open space with a lot of individuals. For those of you, I'm sure everyone has visited, it's just bunk beds, very communal. And for, for a young family, for young children, I, I don't know how they can stay there for very long. That's why I was asking about Salvation Army, that if there's, it seems as though Salvation Army seems to focus on families. Every time I've been to the Salvation Army Center, I see a lot more families than I see at some of the other places. And I'm wondering if there's a way to kind of specialize or bring in some specialization to say, okay, well, you obviously have expertise in this area, they're in the city, in the central, central part. So that's one question, I don't know if there's an answer to that.
Councilmember Kasakian, I'm actually happy to say that we've been working very closely in the last few months with the Salvation Army, very closely, to see how we can collaborate better, to bring in some more support from them for our families in our COC. That's another area that we're looking at is Glendale only has a coordinated entry system for homeless individuals. So homeless families that come through our system have to be referred out to LA Family Housing in LA. They serve all of SPA 2, and we fall within SPA 2. So one of the areas there is sometimes when our clients get referred out, it's difficult to get them placed through the system when they're not here. And so there's a big disconnect there. So we're working on pulling in LA Family Housing, bringing in our key players like Home Again LA. They've really stepped up to the plate. Home Again LA right now, their team is serving as our CES lead right now. And, and it's unofficially they're serving, they're, they're not getting paid to do this, but they are because they recognize the need and they recognize how effective it is to have a CES system in our community. So we really need to coordinate with LA Family Housing just to help our families. There's a big gap in, in services for our families and rapid rehousing beds. So with all of our state funds that are coming down the pipeline with HAP funds, Housing and Homeless Assistance Program funds, a little over 600,000, which we will, we will bring, you know, will I update Housing Authority and City Council on, we are going to be prioritizing funding for the rapid rehousing program to help our homeless families.
So when they're referred out, as you say, the term that you used, what happens, does that mean they have to go to another location in order to get processed and receive the help that they need?
Yes.
And what happens to like a child who's, let's say, enrolled in a school at that time?
Correct. That child has to go through that agency. In the meantime, you have to figure out, well, how can we provide interim housing? Do we have hotel vouchers? Do we have some type of even non-congregate sheltering? Can we work with our faith-based organizations to provide a small, non-congregate sheltering for our families? That's really an area that I've always stressed on too because I do see families coming through our access center. And I, I don't know if it's a good setup to have individuals and families, especially families who have had DV or other types of trauma. I don't think it's, it's helpful to have children in the same setting as homeless individuals. It just doesn't. So that I wanted to put out there too, is we really need support in trying to figure out a better coordinated entry system for our homeless families in Glendale.
I have no more questions. There's a lot more, but I'm.
Yeah, there is a lot. There is a lot. So I guess, you know, I see all these numbers and I, I have a sense of frustration because I know that this point in time count is, is pretty flawed. And yet we talk about, you know, 17% up and 3% down, and we, we kind of imply this precision that really doesn't exist. And it makes it difficult to wrap one's head around, you know, what's really happening, where the problems are. I, I just am skeptical about all of it. But I know, I know we do that, we, we do that because we have to do that for funding. But it seems pretty unsatisfying as, as far as something that can guide, you know, policymaking. And I don't know, I don't know if there are other methodologies, other ways, cities that are doing other, more, you know, more comprehensive, more frequent perhaps surveys. And maybe you know, if there are any cities, any here or elsewhere that are, that really are able to get a better handle on, on their homeless population, the demographics, the reasons they're homeless, all those kinds of things that, that this point in time count, I don't know, just, it's just kind of like a tease. What, what do you, what do you know about maybe some better practices?
Mayor Broadman, members of the council, members, Chair Najarian, members of the Housing Authority. The homeless point in time count, we always kind of look at it as it is a snapshot. So I know I, I go over these numbers and I'm often, sometimes I'm hesitant to present the numbers because it is just a, it's a, it's a snapshot. It's a lens into what's happening in our community. But what we have done, especially last year and this year, is we are pulling in data from a comparable database, something that's a little bit more reliable. Our HMIS homeless, HMIS system is very reliable. We have case notes in there, we have day-to-day interactions with our clients that are being documented in the system. We have data sharing ability with LSA and Pasadena. So our HMIS system, we actually utilize the system and share data with the LA COC and the Pasadena COC. So we're able to see everyone that's coming through for services. And that's exactly what we're trying to do. Yes, we understand we have to do this PIT count every year, and we will because it is also nice to have this count year after year. It does bring in a lot of our community members. It gives us the opportunity to connect with our unhoused neighbors that have been in our streets for quite some time to build that rapport. You know, I was surprised to see that some of the clients remembered us from last year or 10 years ago. And so it's a way, believe it or not, to build rapport and connection with, with the clients. But I, I do agree with you. I think just relying on the homeless count results alone, it's not going to give us the numbers that we, we should be looking at. And that's why we have to pull in the comparable year-round data, which we plan on doing year after year moving forward. That's, and, and we do check with other COCs. We're actually part of the Southern Alliance, the COC Alliance, Southern California, and we do all communicate with one another. So if there's any policy changes, any improvements that we can make, we make sure to coordinate with one another. And Pasadena, you know, their homeless count numbers are actually slightly similar to ours. Last year, they had a slight decrease. They haven't reported the results this year yet, but they're pretty much aligned with Glendale in terms of their numbers. So we do try to make improvements and, but I do acknowledge your point, and I do see sometimes it's, you know, 67% of the 15 people that we came across, that doesn't really tell us a lot. And HUD recognizes that. And we have pushed for more reliable data. We have asked HUD, is there any way we could revisit the way we do the homeless count and the methodology? And they understand and they acknowledge that it's really meant to be just a point in time, it's just a snapshot, a day, you know, one day count. That's why it's, it's our responsibility to also look at the data that's coming through our HMIS system.
Well, I guess, yeah. I mean, I'm certainly not suggesting we don't do it. We're going to do it, and there may be some other benefits that you mentioned in terms of community, you know, involvement and all the rest of it. But as far as our ability to sit here and make kind of policy decisions on what we do about, you know, addressing the population, I don't think this point in time count really gives us what we need. So I would, I mean, I would like to see if we do have other ways of gathering data that's more comprehensive, I would, I would like to see not just a whole bunch of numbers, but something that you and the team analyze and come back and say to us, you know, here, here are some major trends, or here are some major drivers of homelessness. And here are some of the things that we should do. And I, that was one of the things I want to ask you, if there were one thing that we could, one, one policy lever that we could pull right now, what would be that one thing that would make the biggest difference either, you know, let's say, in the, over the next one or two years? What would be that thing?
Mayor Broadman, members of City Council, Chair Najarian, members of the Housing Authority, I have to just pick one thing?
Well, maybe I'll let you pick two if you want. But I mean, really, ultimately, I think that's what we want to hear. We want to hear, like, what is it that we can do? Because I think the problem is, is of much greater magnitude than this point in count is telling us, right? is telling us, right? I know it's multifaceted, there's domestic violence, there's mental health issues, there's housing costs, there's blah, 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 like lots of different stuff. So it's a hard problem. But if there were, you know, that's ultimately what, what I'm, I'm feeling dissatisfied because I want to know from you what we can do to address this problem.
Mayor Broadman, I would say we're very appreciative and grateful of federal funds that we receive, this $2.7 million. But I think with federal funding, we do have a lot more restrictions. We do have a lot more that we have to go through and a lot of red tape and the way we can serve our clients. Sometimes with these federal funds, we do have vacancies in our programs, but because our clients don't meet the federal requirements such as the chronically homeless status definition, we're not able to more, move clients into housing more quickly. So I think although federal funds are wonderful and we're very grateful to have this program, I think we also look, need to look at other flexible funding sources that kind of eliminate some of the administrative burden, the programmatic regulatory requirements that prevent us from moving forward and helping our unhoused population stabilize more quickly, get into housing. There is a lot more restrictions that, there are a lot more restrictions that come with federal funds. And now with state funding as well. You know, we have some aggressive goals that we have to meet and work towards. So one thing that I would say is, you know, some more flexible funding, maybe local funds be prioritized for this type of programming. And also, you know, I kind of want to answer the Councilmember Devine's question about the chronically homeless population. And as Councilmember Kasakian mentioned, with the chronically homeless population, housing them through a regular housing program, you know, scout, you know, placing them anywhere in your community, the recidivism rate is very high, because they need wraparound supportive services. And what we found to be more successful is permanent supportive housing that is project-based. Having all of our clients, even on a small-scale project, maybe 10 units, 15 units, but having them in one single location where services are provided there onsite. You know, if you have veterans, you can have the VA drive down to the location to provide services, you can bring in a mobile DMV onsite, you can bring in all of these different types of services. That would help our population not only stay housed, but also get services there onsite. So to answer your question, the top two things that kind of stick out is having more flexibility with our grants and the regulatory requirements to allow us to do more and not focus so much on the administrative burden. Our agencies do an incredible job. We have some wonderful agencies in our community and they're really working very hard. One of the things that I've just recently wanted to share with all of you that I'm really proud of is our collaboration with the Glendale Unified School District. And the response that we have from our service providers and that connection with the district has been incredible. When we come across a homeless youth or a homeless family, I can confidently tell you that our response is within five minutes. That's how quickly we're able to respond and get our families the help that they need. And I'm incredibly proud of the coordination that's currently taking place with GUSD and our service provider. So I don't want to take anything away from the work that they're doing, and I know all of you are witnessing that work, but we really have a lot more work to do. And, and I am, I'm thankful that you all are asking me what the need is and for your, for your support, so.
So I guess, I, I know that you, you're, you're in the midst of it, and I, and I believe you know where the, where the issues are and what we could do to make, make a difference. So I would really ask you to come back to us in, you know, not too long. And tell us, you know, what it is that, that we can do. Let's say we have a goal, we want to eliminate veteran homelessness. Let's say we want to eliminate children that are homeless. Let's, let's maybe identify a specific goal. What do we need to do? What can we do? What's it going to cost? What's it going to take? I think we need more, I need anyway, more concrete, actionable proposals from staff. And then I think we can, we can all decide whether that's something we can, we can get behind. So Mr. Galanian, if we could, if we could do that, I think we, we can maybe start taking some concrete steps, because this is all a bit nebulous to me.
Just comment.
Okay. Councilmember Devine.
The snapshot of the count of homeless, that number is what is used as a basis for the Measure H funds, right?
That is correct.
So when you talk about the snapshot being underestimated or undercounted, that's costing us in Measure H funding. And I know when we first campaigned for that measure, we were under the impression that we were going to get a lot more than 200,000 or 100,000. And you've been fighting, haven't you, with, I guess, the LA to kind of change the way they divide up those funds?
Council, Councilmember Devine, yes, we have. We've been actually collaborating with the county CEO's office. In fact, just last week, we were in the process of finalizing our contract and really pushing for more funding and more flexibility. And, and they are responding. They are working with us to see how they can get us some additional funds through Measure H. I'm not sure what they can do at this time in, in terms of a significant increase in Measure H funds, but they are listening to us, they are taking this back. And I'm hoping that we have an update from them within the next month or two for our Measure H contract for fiscal year 2003, 2004. It looks like we are going to get some additional funds. I just can't tell you what that amount looks like at this time.
Well, that's good, and that's maybe another way that council can, can be helpful is to push Mayor Broadman, to push for more funding from that Measure H, because we are getting the short end of the stick on that one, for sure. Thank you.
Then also what we do about it, what we do with it. Yeah. So I think you're, you're pushing us along, right? Okay.
Mayor Broadman, we will be, Mr. Galanian, we, we will be working on our Glendale homeless action plan. So one of the reasons why we really wanted to push for an action plan is to really solidify our needs, to really be able to tell you exactly where the gaps are, what type of funding we currently have, what we anticipate receiving and where the gaps are. So part of developing this action plan, which we will be presenting to you, would include our, our gaps analysis, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, I think we've got a motion, a resolution from council, and then a housing motion, so.
I'll move the council, the council motion.
I'll second.
And the resolution, can we do these all together?
Yeah, do the both, two of them.
So A and B, one A and B? Is that a motion from Councilmember Najarian for one A and B?
I'll second.
And the second from Councilmember Kasakian? And may we have roll call on that, please?
Yes. Councilmembers Asatiran, Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Broadman.
Yes.
And for the housing, I'll move number three.
And I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Housing Authority members Ajinian, Asatiran, Broadman.
Oh, yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Parazian.
Yes.
Chair Najarian.
Yes.
Okay, and what's next?
Move to adjourn for council.
And no, there were no comments? You said that somebody dropped?
There were no comments.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, council is adjourned and I'll move.
Move to adjourn for housing?
For housing, and I'll second that.
Housing's adjourned.
Okay. Now we, yeah. Close session. Yeah, let's, let's, you have to switch over, right? Oh, we have already? Okay. All right, so I will call the closed session meeting of the Glendale City Council to order at 4:19 on May 23rd. May we have roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmembers Asatiran, Devine.
Yeah, here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Broadman.
Here. And could you please read the closed session items into the record?
Yes. Closed session, item B, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, California Rifle and Pistol Association Incorporated et al. versus City of Glendale et al., USDC case C, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Glen Oaks Canyon Homeowners Association versus City of Glendale, LASD case number 22STCP00114. D, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Los Angeles Waterkeeper versus California State Water Resources Control Board et al., case number 23STCP01492. E, public employment attorneys.
Thank you. And Mr. City Attorney, do we anticipate reporting out on any of these?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I anticipate reporting on items 1C and 1E.
1C and 1E, okay.
Sorry, 1D and 1E.
I'm sorry, 1D and 1E. Okay. So now we will recess to closed session. Thank you.